Before I deal with the housekeeping now, I'm going to just bring in our Chair, councillor Joe Bryan, to briefly welcome colleagues. Thank you Chair.
Welcome everybody to our planning committee meeting this morning and unusually we only have 11 items so I'm always very reluctant to say that we're going to finish promptly, but you never know. Thank you everybody who's tuning in and thank you all our councillors who made it here today so that we're for it. Over to you Michael.
Thank you Chair, that's smashing. Just in terms of procedural requirements, I'm just going to run through the members' presence, make sure you can see and hear us. So firstly, our Deputy Chair is councillor Conception, can you hear us okay?
Yes Mike, I can hear and see you, thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent councillor Hanson.
I'm clear Michael.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Kennedy, are you with us at this stage? Don't think so, in which case we'll move on to councillor Marette.
I'm good, thank you Michael.
Smashing. Councillor Juarez.
Yes hello, I can hear you loud and clear and I can see you too.
Brilliant. Welcome to councillor Tool and he'll be speaking on one of our items later in proceedings, so welcome Maria. Excellent, thank you. Just to confirm also for the record that we have apologies also from councillor Dave Cummings. With that in mind, I'll just take us straight into today's items of business. So firstly, in terms of declarations of interest, do members have any to declare? In which case can you indicate now?
Michael, I'll be speaking against item 6.
You're the local ward councillor, am I correct as well Joe? Okay, that's smashing, thank you. Any other declarations from colleagues? Smashing, thank you. Next, the minutes of our last virtual meeting has held on the 18th of November. Pages 4 to 17 in your agenda, set these out in some detail. Are there any comments or issues from members at all? Or you're happy to agree? If you are, please nod your head as an indication of consent. Thank you, thumbs up will do perfectly fine, thank you. I have no urgent items of business to report today, so with that in mind, I'll take us straight into the applications for consideration. Our first item is number 4, which relates to the Gostons Building, numbers 32 to 36 Hanover Street, Liverpool One, which is in Riverside Ward. Chair, if I can bring you in at this stage?
Yes, and I heard that we have Brian Madden, who's going to speak on behalf of the agent or architect. Is Brian ready to come in?
Yes.
Thank you Brian, would you like to carry on? You have up to 5 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully I'll use that time wisely. Good morning Chair and council members. First of all, I'd like to start when the slide comes on. First slide. Okay, so the reference site is an existing building, known locally as the Gostons Building, which is on 32 to 36 Hanover Street. It's a city centre development and it's currently lying vacant. It's located very close to Liverpool One and I'm sure most of you know the building. The building also lies within the Duke Street Conservation Area and is on the edge of the Martin Muggintown UNESCO World Heritage Site. The building is approximately 100 years old and we believe it was constructed originally between 1910 and 1920 by Cor and Erding Saunders and Company. They were a pharmaceutical wholesaler. The building currently is over seven storey heights. It's a steel and concrete frame, detailed in imperial brick, sandstone and mould of terracotta. The context, the building sits surrounded by an eclectic mix of different uses, retail, residential, hotels, restaurants, bars and cafes. Sadly, the building is deteriorating, needs urgent fabric repair and really isn't contributing to the high street of the local environment. If you move on to slide 2 please, Mike. The proposal is to bring this new important historic building back and to convert it into exciting hotel. It's not a speculative development, the building is owned by the hotel operator. The operator is part of the Fatal Group and they operate 165 hotels in 17 different countries. The brand that they have selected is the NEX brand, which uses local influences to create a bespoke hotel experience for each site. And this will involve the complete refurbishment and repair of the historical entrance features to retain the industrial style and integrity of this beautiful building. And we've also provided a delicate two-storey roof extension, which is set back on the upper stories. Slide 3 please, Mike. Yeah, this is the proposed main elevation of Hanover Street with the two-storey extension and you can see the floor plan set out with the new bedrooms. The new accommodation is essentially a delicate reconfiguration of the existing layout to about 207 pretty large guestrooms with supporting ancillary accommodation. It also includes the sensitive refurbishment of the ground floor areas to include double height reception, a mezzanine restaurant, ground floor cafe and bar with direct access onto Hanover Street. The building is designed to be fully accessible and will meet the requirements of all users. The primary access is off Campbell Street to the rear with the guest access off Hanover Street. And the new proposal extends to just over 100,000 square feet. Slide 4 please, Mike. Yeah, so these are two CGI's of the building. The first one shows the existing condition with the temporary repairs on the building, the sticky plasters if you like. And the new image shows a full refurbishment of the existing Hanover Street elevation with the new two-storey extension on the top. The rooftop extension will house only bedrooms and there'll be some spectacular panoramic views across the city from those rooms. Slide 5 please. And these are the longer views from the Docklands adjacent to the bus station. The left-hand slide shows the building without the rooftop extension, you can see the Novotel Hotel Development behind in the white. And then the right-hand side slide indicates the two-storey extension on top of the existing building. So really, should the council members choose to approve this scheme, there will be, I think, many benefits. It's a £20 million investment by the hotel operator, the construction jobs for over two years and the long-term benefits will obviously be the new opportunities for local staff, up to 80 full and part-time employees. That's the end of the presentation, thank you.
That's great and you did it in the time, thank you for that Brian. Are there any questions? No, I don't see anybody indicating that they've got a question Brian. So I'm going to, thank you for your presentation, I'm going to hand over now to our case officer to raise any issues and summarise for us. So over to you Fergal.
Chair, thank you very much. Fergal McVoy, team leader for City Centre Development Management Team. I think all members of the planning committee will be aware of this site. This is the fifth application that's been in front of you for conversion of Gostons Building into hotel. The last application that you considered was back in November of last year when the proposal was to convert it into a 270-bedroom hotel with a four-story top roof extension. The section 106 agreement was never signed, so we didn't release the decision notice in respect of that application. I think the scheme in front of you today, it's from officers' point of view, it's more preferable than the one you previously considered. Instead of the four-story top roof extension, you've got a two-story rooftop extension in this place. You've kind of seen through the CGI's and the presentation that it's a contemporary subtle intervention that doesn't impact on World Heritage Site and Duke Street Conservation Areas, perhaps the other scheme. The proposal is to convert the building into 207-bedroom hotel, access off Hanover Street with servicing the rear of the building off Campbell Street. There's been three objections to the application from residents, these are detailed in your report. They relate largely to the servicing of the hotel. Campbell Street to the rear is quite narrow, but your highways officers are satisfied that this is practical. There's a condition in place that requires a servicing management strategy, so due to the width of the carriage weight and the width of the pavement, perhaps smaller vehicles are required to service the building, then would be the norm, but we're comfortable with that. There's been concerns relating to effectively all the building is to be converted with upgrading of windows on a Hanover Street frontage. On the south-west elevation, which is that elevation that's visible from the docks area, you've got existing industrial-type windows due to fire regulations and there's a requirement to upgrade the fenestration details. So the openings won't be as large and there'll be more kind of modern intervention. The proposal is where those windows are to be blocked up, to be recessed brick panels in their place, but that is conditioned, subject to further information. And the last objection relates to kind of loss of light. At the rear of the site, on the opposite side of Campbell Street, you've got an existing five-story residential block. They're concerned about the potential loss of light from the development. The existing Gostons Building is eight stories in height with a two-story rooftop extension. So any loss of light to those properties occurs from the existing building. The likelihood of a two-story rooftop extension impacting further on the amount of those properties is negligible. The scheme is supported by colleagues in heritage urban design and also Historic England with one or two minor caveats however. These are all detailed in the report. The level of harm to World Heritage Site and Duke Street Conservation Area is a low level, less than substantial, and the recognition that hopefully this finally brings a vacant prominent building back into use for use that is appropriate in the location, Chair. So all the issues are fully assessed in the report and it's subject to payment of full section 106, which totals just out of £50,000. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Fergal. Are there any questions for the case officer from committee members?
Don't appear to be any Chair.
There don't seem to be there Michael. So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved, is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Any members wish to move any amendments at this stage? No, thank you. In which case we'll conduct a vote. So firstly, Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
David Michael.
I can do now.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marette?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to confirm, in terms of the voting members, the vote is unanimous and our application is therefore approved on that basis. We will therefore move on to our next item of business on today's agenda, which is item number 5, which relates to the former MTL site on Edge Lane, Liverpool 7, which is located in Picton Ward. Chair?
Well, we have a presentation now on behalf of the agents and architects from Dawn Coward. Dawn, would you like to come in now?
Yeah, thank you Chair, members of the committee, officers. Dawn Coward, Rider Architecture. Thank you. The proposal is to erect two temporary buildings on the former MTL site, which I think you're probably all aware of. It's located off Edge Lane, adjacent to the Littlewoods Building. And the proposal will involve associated heavy goods vehicles and car parking. Slide 2 please. Slide 1? Slide 2? Right, as you can see, the site's split into three, three plots adjacent to the existing Littlewoods Building. And they're all shown by the red line boundary, situated on the southern side of Edge Lane, located between the Innovation Boulevard and the existing Innovation Park. There's a wide pedestrian pathway, which you can see between the second and the third plot, which leads to the Innovation Park, aligning it with the Littlewoods Building. So therefore, if you look to the right of the slide where it's shown in green, you've got plots A, B and C. So the proposal is to erect two temporary film studios to provide accommodation and workshop space for film production teams, because there actually isn't a home for any filming in Liverpool. You may recall recently there's been Batman, there's been Tin Star, and they actually don't have a home in Liverpool when they're doing the filming. So it is of a temporary nature that we're proposing this. Slide 3 please. So plot A would be laid out for cars, goods, vehicles, parking spaces for 166 spaces, would there be new gates and fences and it'd all be DDA compliant. Plot B, there'd be two temporary film structures proposed, 60 by 30 metre footprint, and they'd be erected on concrete slabs. Opposite ends of the plots were servicing, which should actually take place in the centre. And there'd be a new road access within the site and parking facilities also proposed. On plot C, which is in the bottom right-hand corner, there's actually nothing proposed, that's just going to be laid out and left for the time being. Your local plan identifies this land as primary industrial and from what I can gather, there's been no objections at all to the proposal. And I think in terms of the fact it is allocated for that, this is a business, a new business, and that also falls within your allocated local plan. A transport assessment and a mass has been carried out, they've been submitted with the application and there don't seem to be any objections from your highway officers. Slide 4 please. As you can see from this slide, it doesn't show a lot in terms of design, but it is of temporary nature. And it's basically what we call a marquee, but it's more substantial than a marquee. It'd be lightweight metal insulated panels finished off in a light grey colour. Visually from Edge Lane, it wouldn't be visible. It'd be very limited, given the location and the screening and the planting that would be shown around it. Slide 5 please. This illustrates the low-key nature of the proposal. If you look closely, you can't really see the actual temporary structures proposed, but they are all well set back and they are all well screened with lots of trees and planting. Final slide please. So this just gives you an overview of the visualisation. You've got the Littlewoods Building on the right-hand side and the two marquees, which are actually adjacent to the digital way, set off to the left. On this basis, we think that this application, which is great for Liverpool, should be approved. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm sure the case officer will bring it up, but we actually had 18 notices of support, something a bit unusual for this committee. As far as I know, there've been no objections unless there's been any late ones. So are there any questions for Dawn? Joe, councillor Hanson?
David Michael.
I can hear you Joe.
Can I ask the applicant, there's no mention within the, I've missed it and my apologies for that. How do you intend to supply power to your facility?
I think we've been in touch with Scottish Power and it'll all be provided within the film studios.
Well, within the discussions and the presentations that you gave to, not you personally, but you gave to a number of the councillors, we were talking, or you were talking, about installing two commercial industrial generators. And these have been discussions since taking place with both the chief executive, cabinet member Claire Slinger and myself, in relation to those generators. And we were assured that there's going to be a power station brought into play, but the planning application, or the application that I'm reading today, doesn't make any note of that. So I am concerned that the power station doesn't come into play and we end up with generators, which will fly in the face of the cleaner greener agenda that we have for the City Council. So perhaps if you can answer that, maybe one of my officers can pick it up in a minute.
I know there were discussions around that, councillor Hanson, and I'm not, to be honest, I'm not completely sure whether that's been left on it, but I don't know if it's perhaps been mentioned in the committee report.
I'll pick it up when the officers, when we get there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Dawn. Are there any other questions for Dawn? Okay, well thank you for your presentation and I will now hand over to our case officer, who hopefully might be able to answer councillor Hanson's questions, but certainly will summarise the issues for us.
Thank you Chair. Members, my name is John Hayes, I am the team leader for Development Management in the north of Liverpool. Chair, you've got a full report in front of you, you've had a very thorough presentation there from the agent on behalf of the applicant, which is the City Council in this particular case. The proposal has been clearly set out to you, as you've heard, it is for two marquees, they're described as, the pop-up film studios. As you've heard, they would be, they're not canvas structures, they're lightweight grey metal structures. So they have a slightly more degree of permanence about them than you might otherwise read from the report. And obviously you've seen from the plans where those buildings are to be located. Just in terms of the issues Chair, the principle is considered acceptable, particularly because these are being considered for a temporary period only, and there is a condition on to that effect. As you've heard, and as is set out in the report, the application has been accompanied by a detailed transport assessment that's looked at the impact on the traffic network from the comings and goings of traffic movements. Just on that point Chair, one issue that hasn't been mentioned but has been raised by the local ward councillors, which is referenced in the tabled update note, is in relation to cycle parking. So if you're minded to grant planning permission for this, can I suggest that a change is made to condition for, to add for details of cycle parking to be submitted as a further detail. Chair, then in relation to other matters, residential amenities and so on, again, that's all clearly set out for you in the report. Design, you've seen the buildings, they're utilitarian in their appearance, but again, from the presentation, you've seen where they sit within the context of the wider business park and from Edge Lane, they're seen against the backdrop of the very substantial Littlewoods Building. And your officer's view is that they would not have any harmful impact on the wider visual amenity. Chair, finally, in relation to planning obligations, you'll see again from the tabled update note, that there's been a number of changes made to the planning obligations. In particular, the applicants have now provided a further plan such that condition 2 will also need to be updated to reflect those plans. And those plans show a number of trees within the overall development to be planted as part of the scheme. That means that there is no longer any requirement to provide street trees in lieu of that than are provided on site. In addition Chair, the process by which any contributions are made cannot be done through a section 106 or other legal agreement, because effectively this is an internal transfer. And again, that is reflected in the tabled update note. There is however, some discussion currently taking place internally about the precise way that that is achieved. And with your agreement Chair, and that of the committee, we would also ask for delegated authority to resolve that issue, if indeed it does need resolving. My colleague Mike Jones might come in on that point afterwards. Finally Chair, just to pick up on councillor Hanson's issues around the electricity supply, I'm afraid I don't have the answer for him. These are not issues that I was aware of in terms of the wider discussion. My assumption has been, looking at this application, that the power would be from generators, certainly initially, but obviously that's not, there's nothing in this application as it stands that suggests a more permanent facility such as a substation. So my understanding is that it would be initially through generators. Again, I don't know whether the applicant's agent has anything further to say on that, but-
I'm going to invite the applicant in because she did actually put her virtual hand up. So maybe she's got some information on this. So can I call on you again please, Dawn, to come in?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah, I have checked on that and it's definitely not going to be generators, I've been advised. It's either a substation or they're going to power it off the local network, but it's not generators, I've been told.
So councillor Hanson, did you want to come back on that?
I am concerned that that information is not included within the paperwork that we have seen today, given the assurance that we received from both the chief executives and Claire Slinger, that both myself and the cabinet number three, Jen, received. So I will once or request that that wording of a power supply be incorporated into our the minutes or the report, and to ensure that there's not a change of mind. I'm not being disrespectful to the developer, but we've seen many changes of mind as we go through some development programmes within the city. So can I have that commitment written into our ministry John, or into the, sorry, Michael, or into the actual report John, if you can amend the report to include that?
Michael, are you able to answer us on this one?
I can certainly explicitly record the comments made by the agents confirming the source of power supply. Obviously if John can comment further as well.
Yeah, thank you Mike, thank you Chair, thank you Joe. In relation to that requirement, I don't see that there's any particular reason why we couldn't, again, amend condition 4, which is the requirement for further details to be submitted, to include details of electricity supply to the temporary structures. So we could certainly request that as part of further details.
Thank you Joe and Michael.
Are there any other questions? I don't see anybody indicating. So I'm going to move that the recommendation, as amended, and we've got amendments now to conditions 2 and 4, be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Are there any further comments from members before I conduct the vote or any amendments?
Mike, can I just add that again, it's subject to that additional delegated authority to perhaps tweak, if necessary, the resolution in terms of the process by which funds are transferred, just to ensure that there's no last-minute issues around that.
That's correct John. Just in terms of the effect of the delegation, that is essentially to grant delegation to the head of planning to determine the formal wording at the final resolution on that matter. So that's the actual effect of the variance. With that in mind, Chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marette?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez? You want to mute my name?
Agreed.
That's right, thank you. I'll take that. That's right, thank you, I'll take that, you're sent. Just for purposes of the record, in terms of the members present and voting, the voting was unanimous in favour and the recommendation as amended is approved with the final resolution to be determined by the head of planning in accordance with the additional delegation granted by committee through the resolution. Thank you. We will now move on to our next item of business, which is number six on today's agenda, which relates to number 216 Westminster Road, Liverpool four, which is in Kirkdale Ward. And just as a reminder, councillor Hanson has declared an interest on this application on the basis that once the architect and agent has addressed us, councillor Hanson would like to address us in his capacity as local ward councillor. So with that in mind, Chair.
I'd like to invite Philip Ord to address the committee on behalf of the architect and agent. Philip, are you there?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Yes, if you'd like to have your five minutes, up to five minutes presentation now.
Thank you. So the proposal is for eighteen flats and five houses along Westminster Road and Barlow Lane. Could we have the next slide please? And the site is predominantly surrounded by residential houses. And to the north of the site, we've got the petrol station along Barlow Lane and to the south of the site, we've got a series of shops and also opposite, we've got Westminster Pub, which is being converted into a hotel at the moment. Further along to the north of Westminster Road, we've got a series of houses. And next slide please. To the north of the site, we will have five houses, which will follow the existing building line along the road. This is many houses, they're quite tall units with large gardens, we will follow that. Halfway through the site, there's a transition as you come down Westminster Road where the buildings become a lot taller. As mentioned earlier, you've got Westminster Pub, which is four storeys and a tall building. I've got a series of shops with residential accommodation above. And again, to the north of the site, we've got the petrol filling station and to the east of the site, we've got more houses. And next slide please. The houses along Westminster Road, again, although they're only two stories with basements, they're quite large houses. And then the Westminster Pub, we can see on the top drawing, is a very tall building. So working between the ridge lines of these, the houses and the Westminster Pub, we've stepped the buildings up as we go along. We start with two storey houses, which then transition into a three storey apartment block before coming four stories along the frontage of Barlow Lane. We've decided the frontage should be along the cable line. This evolved when we worked with the planning officer on the scheme. Again, you can see the Westminster Road shops on the bottom. These again, we have worked to keep the building under the ridge line of these shops and ensure that the scheme doesn't look overly sized, which was some of the concerns raised during the process. Next slide please. We looked at the relevant policies of this, again, we know there is a need for residential units within Liverpool, it sits within a designated primary residential area. The scheme will be 100% affordable, all flats and houses. The end user for the scheme will be onwards, they manage and own over 35,000 homes across the region, so we know, you know, these are comfortable taking the scheme forward. The commiserate to ensuring that customers have high quality homes and they aim to make a positive difference in the communities they serve. We hope that you'll be positive with this application and that's all we have for now, thank you.
Thank you Philip, are there any questions? Councillor Hanson?
I'll speak in there, yeah.
Oh right. That's for you to speak later, okay. Any other questions?
Don't appear to be any Chair.
No, all right, well, I'll invite councillor Hanson to come in now to speak on this, so councillor Hanson won't actually be voting on this.
Thank you Chair, first and foremost, I can thank both the developers and the, our council officers, I know, for the work that they've put into bringing the plan, this development to planning committee, albeit that's some of the issues I disagree with. But clearly, from a Kirkdale perspective, we've had, or have had real opposition from residents living round, round the area and that's included within the report and not just, what's said in the report, real local opposition to this application. I think the smallest point I guess is the house that we're going to build on, on back Westminster Road, there are two car parking spaces allowed on each property. And the reality is, if you put a van on there, traffic coming out of back Westminster Road, and if you can imagine Chair, one side is a wall, you cannot actually see Westminster Road as you're coming out, because of blind spots. And at this point in time, on the left hand side, you have three, the rest of it's clear, so you can see what is coming up the road. If the resident parks a van there, that becomes a total blind spot for traffic coming out of back Westminster Road. Back Westminster Road is actually a nine foot entry, but there are businesses at the back, there are garages, there's some living accommodations and a little bungalow in there, so whilst there's a great deal of traffic, there's traffic going in there to put the cars in for repair and that kind of stuff, or there's four little car places that do repairs and that kind of stuff. So that is a real concern we are creating and I've raised it with Andy Dingwall and obviously, as normal Andy, you chose to disagree with me. The second issue, again, it's traffic and again, if you know Westminster Road, Westminster Road is extremely busy, it's a busy sort of, coming out the city, the left turn off Westminster Road into Westminster Road, but that carries on down, that down to the Carmel Rose Road. Traffic trying to get off there is really, really, really difficult. What's happening with the area is becoming more and more condensed. Now, I accept and understand that some of the traffic that's coming off that, new development, will have some difficulty, but part of, I'm asking, through the planning, maybe a little bit cheeky, but can we have an in-depth traffic survey done within that area? And I think the residents deserve that, that's what they've asked for, so perhaps, you know, highways would grant me that through this process. The real issue and a big issue, and I told the developers before they even submitted the plans, and I have a good relationship with the developers, let me put that up front, they've done a number of projects within Kirkdale, which they've involved me and totally supported me where they believed they could, unless it's costing money, then they disagreed with me. But they've done some real good stuff in Kirkdale, and I applaud them for that. But this particular one, it's just the height, it is the height that says, you know, it's four story height, you know, there are large buildings in the area, but this is a, you know, a particularly exposed corner of Westminster Road. And we're grateful that the developer's going in, he's knocking down the pub, because I've been a fan of that circle a number of years, but the actual height of the development is too high and that is what is causing most concern in the area. So on that point, I'd stop, I'd just ask the planning committee to reflect on the comments I've made and see if you can support those comments and so if you can, residents will be absolutely delighted and developers won't be talking to me for a number of months, but hey ho, that's business, isn't it? So I'll finish on that point Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or points from committee members?
Don't appear to be any indications Chair.
I'm going to hand over now to our case officer and I would welcome Andy Dingwall also coming in, because he's the highways officer. First of all, over to you John.
Thank you Chair, so again, a very helpful presentation there and hopefully members have got a better understanding of the scheme than from just reading the agenda papers. So again, full report in front of you, which sets out the various issues. You've seen from the presentation where the site is located, it's an existing public house, which is currently located back from the street, both from Westminster Road and Barlow Lane, so that it is closer to the residential properties and the surrounding part of the plot is car parking. So the proposal is to demolish the building and as you've seen, to erect five individual dwelling houses, which would be a continuation of the street along Westminster Road side and then on the remaining part of the plot, on the junction between Barlow Lane and Westminster Road, you would have a part four, part three storey block of flats, total of eighteen units within that. In terms of the issues Chair, again, they're all set out fairly clearly within your report, the principle of development in two parts, so that there are policies that seek to protect community assets such as public houses. We don't feel that in this particular case, there is any need to apply that policy, the demolition of the public house is considered appropriate in this particular case. And then in terms of the principle of residential development, clearly you'll be aware of the surrounding area, obviously Westminster Road is partly, is residential, it's a mixed sort of profile with a petrol filling station to the north, but the principle of residential is considered appropriate. In design terms, I'm not sure whether it's possible to go back to the, the final slide that we had on that presentation, if it is not to worry. If we can get it, it might be helpful just to explain and talk through councillor Hanson's concerns about the height. So the scheme, as you saw, was for a continuation of the five properties and then the erection of the public house that would, sorry, the erection of the block of flats to replace public house on the corner of Barlow Lane and Westminster Road. That block of property, that block of flats would be slightly below the height of the existing public house on the opposite side of the road, the Westminster Public House. And your office's view is that the scale is considered appropriate, so thank you for bringing that image back up. So you can see there that the properties, the five individual houses are slightly lower than the existing properties on Westminster Road and then you have the block that is three storeys and then up to four storeys on the main Barlow Lane elevation. And then from that street scene, you can also see the relationship with the Westminster Pub and as was explained in that presentation, you've got that stepping down from the Westminster Pub down to the properties along Westminster Road. So your office's view is that the height and form of the development is considered appropriate, given the surrounding context. Obviously that is a matter of judgment for you as a planning committee, but you can see for yourself that that relationship and why we as officers consider that to be appropriate. In terms of residential amenity, the application's been assessed against national or local policies in relation to the unit sizes and are considered acceptable. Similarly, in terms of accessibility, again, the report addresses those issues. In terms of the impact on neighbouring amenity, I know that there have been a number of representations in relation to this point and they're set out again in the report. We've looked very carefully at this particular aspect throughout the application process and again, for the reasons set out in the report, they are considered appropriate and it's not considered that the scheme would give rise to any particular problems of overlooking from the development. And then lastly Chair, in terms of highway safety and parking matters, again, this has been looked at by colleagues carefully throughout the application process. I'll try and pick up on councillor Hanson's two points there. The first was about the relationship of the development to back Westminster Road and if you look at the accompanying site plan with the agenda, you'll see that that is a little narrow street that runs along the side of the last property, current last property on Westminster Road and then accesses some properties at the back of those properties. So it is relatively narrow, but our view and that of highway colleagues is that development of the site should not create a blind spot such as to cause detriment to highway safety. And then the second point that was raised by councillor Hanson was in relation to the very busy traffic along Westminster Road and a request for a traffic survey. Obviously colleagues in highways will have looked at this very carefully, they will understand the traffic situation in and around that area and again, they have come to a view that the particular scheme would not significantly add to that traffic such as to cause highway problems. Again, I'll hand over in a moment to my colleague Andy Dingwall, who might be able to deal with those matters in a little bit more detail. In relation to, finally Chair, the remaining matters regarding ecology and trees, various surveys have been submitted. In relation to that, there is a large tree to be removed associated with this development. Our tree officer has confirmed that it is suffering from some disease and therefore it is acceptable for it to be felled. The usual range of section one of six to be applied Chair, and for all the reasons set out in the report, we are recommending approval, subject to the various conditions set out. Chair, can I also just finally just draw your attention again to the tabled update note, which adds a number of further conditions on and a late representation? Thank you.
Thank you John, yes, I have read the update note. Can I invite Andy Dingwall to come in over any highways issues now please?
Yeah, thanks Chair, Andy Dingwall, highways development control team leader. Just picking up on the point there raised by councillor Hanson. The first point I think he made was in relation to concerns about the proximity of the car parking spaces for plot one and the narrow back Westminster Road as it comes out onto the main road there. I'm not sure whether it's possible to get the slide back up, which shows the site layout and also to possibly zoom in on that particular part of the layout. But if you look carefully at the layout, you'll see that the two car parking spaces that are provided for plot one are set back from west, from back Westminster Road by about three metres. There's actually a pedestrian path, which leads to the front door of the property and a narrow landscaping strip as well. So the car parking spaces, if for example, there was a high sided van parked on the driveway, they're actually set away from back Westminster Road, they're not immediately adjacent to it. What that means is that for any driver that's coming out of back Westminster Road, there will be adequate visibility for them to be able to see any pedestrians that might be walking along the footpath of Westminster Road there, so that they're unlikely to step out in front of a vehicle and therefore it's unlikely that there'll be a conflict or a collision between the vehicle and the pedestrian, so we're comfortable in that regard. The other point I would make insofar as visibility is concerned is that the footway that will be provided along Westminster Road there will be two metres wide and that then means that the visibility sightlines for drivers coming out of back Westminster Road is sufficient for them to be able to see traffic, vehicular traffic approaching in either direction. So again, we don't have any highway safety concerns in that regard also. Councillor Hanson made mention of the fact that he would like a traffic survey undertaken in the vicinity and, you know, as a ward councillor, he's more than entitled to make that request and I'm more than happy as an officer to take that back to my colleagues in traffic management and undertake a study. However, you know, we don't believe that it's necessary to undertake that level of detailed study prior to determining this application, because what we need to be mindful of is the actual traffic that's likely to be generated by this development itself and it's our view, given the scale of the development and the amount of car parking that's provided for this residential development, it's not likely to result in any significant levels of additional vehicular traffic in the area. In reality, you know, for that size of residential development- In reality, you know, for that size of residential development, we'd expect maybe a dozen or so vehicle movement in the AM and PM peak period, which, when you break that down over the hour, equates to maybe one or two extra vehicles every five to 10 minutes. So it's not a significant level of additional traffic. And therefore, we don't see any reason to, you know, be concerned about that aspect of this development. And I think the other point to make is that there's adequate levels of car parking. You know, it's relatively low levels of car ownership in this area. You know, it's an affordable housing scheme, so to speak. It's a highly accessible location. So we think the level of car parking is appropriate also. And on that basis, given the fact that we don't consider significant levels of vehicular traffic generated, we don't consider there'll be any highway safety issues as a result of the proposal. And we think there's adequate car parking. We've got no objections to the proposal. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. So it would seem that our professional officers are recommending and have thought carefully about the scheme. And of course, it does give us affordable housing. Are there any other questions or points that people wish to raise?
Thank you, Chair. There don't appear to be any indications at this stage.
So I would like to move that the recommendations, as amended, be approved. And bearing in mind the tabled note, which I'm assuming all our members have read as well. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Any amendments from colleagues who are able to vote on this item firstly? No? In which case, we'll move straight to the vote. Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception? Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. In terms of those members eligible to vote, noting that councillor Hanson had previously declared an interest on this item, the remaining members have voted unanimously in favour of the application, subject to the amendments detailed on the table notes. The application is therefore approved on that basis. We will therefore move on to our next item of business, which is number seven on today's agenda, which relates to a location on Brownlow Hill, Liverpool two, and which is in Central Ward. We have no speakers present in terms of applicants and agents. However, we do have councillors Toulon and Small present as local ward councillors who do wish to address a subjecting. There were also some images to display the application site and location, which I suggest for the Chair that we take the objections first and then display the images for the case officer to comment on.
So would councillor Toulon like to speak first? Councillor Toulon, would you like to come in now? Michael, I know that councillor Toulon was in on the meeting at the beginning. Is she still online?
She is, Chair. I just believe she may be unable to unmute because she appears to have joined from her phone. Maybe more appropriate to bring in councillor Small at this stage, therefore, assuming councillor Toulon's having technical issues.
No, it's Small. Would you like to speak now for up to three minutes? Yeah, thanks a lot, Chair. We've also, councillor Banks just called me. She's just about to join the call, if she's not already, if she's not already on it. But I realise that 5G phone masks are often very controversial, and this one is within this community. The Digital Economy Act does restrict the ability of residents to oppose these type of planning applications. And the responsibility for that does lie with the Tory government. And regrettably, that often leaves residents without a voice and councillors unable to restrict phone masks where they're built without local support, as I believe this one would be. There are two masks already in the immediate area with planning permission. There's one planned for the LGMU Redman's building on the other side of Brownlow Hill. And there's already one up on the former O51 building, further down on Brownlow Hill. The opposition of residents from this is simply that there are too many masks within the local area. And this one would be very close to where residents live. And residents are very concerned about that. Now, the situation that we're in here is the phone operator is saying that they won't need this mask unless the current mask on the O51 building is removed prior to the mask that's being planned and already has planning permission on the Redman's building is put into place. And what I'd like to see put in on this permission, and I realise that the planning committee's ability to reject this is severely restricted because of the Digital Economy Act and because of what can be considered as a planning issue. What I'd like to see is a properly conditioned and legally enforceable position where what the applicant is saying they want to happen, that that is put in place. So that the mask, this mask, doesn't go up unless the O51 mask is removed before the Redman's building mask is put in place. And if this mask does go ahead and the Redman's building mask is subsequently put in place, that this mask is removed. So as long as that is legally enforceable and conditioned in there reluctantly, I think, and I realise that the committee probably doesn't have the ability to reject it in application because of those rejections. So what we're seeking to do is to protect the residents so that this mask doesn't go ahead unless it has to. And if the Redman's building once subsequently goes ahead, that this mask is removed. So that we're not in a situation where there's three masks and there's unnecessary masks off and that impact on the local community.
Thank you, councillor Small. And I think that our case officer will explain to us that there is a condition. They say that this mask has to be removed within months of there being two masks, the mask present on the Redman's building. The Redman's building's having difficulty because the cladding is falling. So councillor Toulon has indicated that she's present now. So would she like to come in for up to three minutes to speak, Maria?
Yes, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
I can.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Okay, I think councillor Small's given a pretty good overview. And the residents got in touch with me about as soon as the mask, the application came through, which is why I think that we've got over 171 objections. They feel very passionately about where the mask is situated. And without getting into any to-ing and fro-ing about the, you know, the science behind the masks and the threats, I think what we all know is there's not a lot of research, or long term research, on the mask. So they are really keen to find and hope that we can come to a solution to find a different location just further away from the immediacy of the community. It was difficult, and I think the case officer realises that we weren't able to give from the planning, a specific head back to location, which I've been able now to share with the residents, which is a little bit further away than they had anticipated. But I'm really hoping that we can find a solution. And that if the mask has to go up, and as councillor Small says, you know, it may not have to go up. But if it does, that there is an agreeable distance away from the current location situated. It's no longer the community. And there are, I think, they are the oldest of the communities, I would say, in the city. And they feel like a side which is, you know, demonstrated by the amount of concern that they've put through through the hand delivered objections to the installation of the mask. So I'm hoping, I know that Fergal supports maybe that we might be able to look at maybe even deferring if we could get the people who who could come maybe and give representations to us. But I'll wait obviously for the case officer. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Toulon. And I believe we have councillor Banks wanting to come in to speak. Councillor Banks, would you like to speak now for up to three minutes?
Yes, I'm not going to take up your three minutes. And thank you for allowing me to speak. We're here by the request of the residents over this mask. And not a lot of information that's gone out of this to the residents. But I'm quite happy with the speech that councillor Small's made and the import councillor Toulon's made. It was about where the mask was situated, right on top of residents, where residents lived, and two schools nearby. And that was the worries from the residents of those areas. I'm quite happy with what the other two councillors have said. So I'm not going to take up more of your time, Chair, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, councillor Banks. Now, are there any questions for the three central ward councillors, the members of the committee?
Don't appear to be any, Chair.
No. So I will pass over now to our case officer. And in particular, I hope Fergal, you're going to be able to say that, you know, this is a temporary permission, if it has to go ahead at all.
Chair, thank you very much. And thanks for the cancer for making the comments. Mike, I don't know if you're able to bring up a slide that shows the location of where the mask would go. It's a twenty metre high 5G monopole mask, which would be operated by Vodafone. Yet should be the next slide, Mike. There's a couple of, there should be two photographs, perhaps at the end of these slides. Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay, Chair, members, planning committee. The mask would be located immediately. There's a small kind of traffic sign in the middle of the photo. The mask would be located directly adjacent to that traffic pole. You can see in the distance just behind the CCC truck, there is a five storey building currently under construction on behalf of Liverpool John Moores University, which you granted planning permission for some eighteen months ago. And you probably can see the top of the roofs of the residential properties along Russell Street and Russell Court. They're in the far distance of the photograph on the right handed photograph. Chair, those properties are some fifty five metres away from this location of the masters to crow's fires. I acknowledge the concerns local residents and ward councillors. I think members, residents were probably under the impression that perhaps the mask would be located near those properties. But in fairness, the plans that were submitted as part of the application weren't. They were quite micro plans, so it didn't give an overall context for the area. So hence, I went out last week and took these photos. I've asked the agents, mono consultants to turn up today, but they were unavailable to do so, I'm afraid. You'll notice within your report, there's objections from all three ward councillors. Initially, there was six individual letters of objection submitted. And then councillor Toulon on Monday morning submitted a further 171 pro forma letters signed by residents in the neighbourhood. And there's a tabled note in front of you to reflect those comments. The comments or objections are largely relating to health, the impact on local residents and pupils of the school, which is on the right hands. You can just about see on the left hand photograph, there's a red brick boundary wall. And that's where the nearest school is located. So councillor Small is quite correct. In the top of photo one, there is the Redman's building. Planning committee granted prior approval consent last year for the, to Vodafone for the sighting of rooftop telecommunications equipment on that building. There has been a delay in citing the equipment due to COVID and also due to the re-cladding of that building. As councillor Small did suggest, that this monopole would only be required from Vodafone, on behalf of Vodafone, if the club 151 building at the junction, bottom of Brownlow Hill and Mount Pleasant were to be demolished before the permanent equipment could go on the rooftop of Redman's building. As said, it's a pity mono consultants aren't here today. I've asked them and they've said it'd probably be, they anticipate another 12 months or so before the rooftop equipment can go on to the Redman's building. I've asked colleagues, but I haven't got a date for the potential demolition of the club 051 building. However, I think it's highly likely that it'd be in excess of 12 months or so. There isn't a planning application, either an outline or full planning permission being submitted for the redevelopment of that site yet. So Chair, you've got a detailed report in front of you. All the application is the principle of the development, the citing of the telecommunications mask, the impact upon the highway, the impact upon adjoining properties is assessed. As said, the mask 20, Slimline Monopole Mask, twenty metres high, is some fifty five metres away from those properties. And the building is under construction, which would be between the two sides. Your colleagues in highways are happy that there's no pavement obstructions in relation to this. The, I think councillor Toulon also suggested perhaps you could look at alternative sites. The applicants, as part of the proposal, did look at seven alternative sites, one a kind of street level and six rooftop location. These are summarised in a report. However, none of the seven alternative sites were available for the citing of the equipment. The application's also been assessed in terms of visual impact and design. As you can see, there's a kind of mixture of built forms and heights in the locality. Immediately to the left of the location, there's a surface level car park. Said, there's a five storey building currently under construction just to the north of the proposed location, sorry, to the east of the proposed location. And beyond that, there's two storey housing. So it's not in a conservation area. It is in the buffer zone of the World Heritage Site. And the heritage officer confirmed he doesn't think there'd be any unacceptable visual intrusion into the street scene. And also, the application is kind of assessed in terms of public health in your mind by the MPPF power 116, which makes it quite clear that we can only determine applications on planning grants and those those itself. So I don't think there is an alternative location that is practical. I hope, as members do, that this application will never come to be. As said, hopefully, the Redman building will become online and become available for the citing of the equipment before the O51 building is demolished. Chair, there's one further issue I want to bring to your attention. Councillor Small raised an issue in terms of some form of to ensure the removal of this mask, should it materialise in the intervening period. And I would draw your attention to condition two, which states within, if this mask were to materialise and then the Redman's building became available at a later date, the applicants would have to take this mask down within three months. They've contacted me and they've said the three month period wouldn't give them sufficient time, basically, to cut off electricity supplies and to arrange the necessary road closure. So they've requested a kind of period of six months for the mask to be taken down, which kind of slightly goes against what kind of councillor Small was hoping would be case. As I said, previous, we've granted tar care operators, we've granted them a period of three months. three months to remove the equipment and other prior approval consents. And I'm satisfied that's a reasonable amount of time. So Chair, you've got a detailed report in front of you. All the objections that ward councillors and local residents have raised have been kind of suitably addressed within the body of the committee report, Chair.
I'd like to add that it says in our notes that we are not allowed to set health safeguards different to the ICNIRP, which stands for International Committee on Non-Ionising Radiation Protection. And this is the reason why councillor Small referred to the matter of the planning committee and planning in general in this country not having adequate powers to refuse these masks should we want to. Now, in actual fact, we've given our councillors the right to speak, but I can see that councillor Toolen's got a hand up again. So I presume you'd like to make another comment, councillor Toolen. So I'll take it that the planning committee would not object to that. So if you'd like to make a quick comment, you may.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It was just to Fergal, the case officer, because I missed the very end, actually. It was just what you were recommending. And would that, if it was to be three months, would that be a confirmed condition? I didn't quite catch the very end, Fergal.
Okay, yeah, thanks councillor Toolen. Yes, as I said, the condition front members today is the mask would be removed within three months from Redmans Building becoming live. The applicants have requested that that period be extended from three to six months. However, on previous consents, we've given a time period of three months, which seems to be sufficient time to arrange the necessary road closures and cut off electricity supply. So obviously, members can decide to accept it with existing condition of three months or extend the temporary kind of period to six months in total.
Thank you.
And that's fine, thank you councillor Toolen. It's very right that you should get clarification on this for the purposes of advising your residents. So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved, and I'm not going to move that we extend the three month limit either. So is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Are any amendments before we proceed to the formal vote? No? In which case, Chair, your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. The voting is therefore unanimous on that basis. Just before we move to our next item, I will confirm that we've just let in an additional speaker for one of our later items of business. Moving on, our next item is number eight on today's papers, that is relating to number 257 St Mary's Road, Liverpool 19, which is in Cressington Ward. Over to you, Chair.
Steve Chapman, and recently registered speakers. I don't know whether both of you want to speak or one of you wants to speak by the other, but you have 45 minutes each. So I'd like to invite Steve Chapman first. Steve, can you come in now?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was hoping that Jason, the architect, would be here to run you through the visuals, but in his absence, I'll do my best.
Okay.
The first slide shows the existing site and a three dimensional aerial view of it. And as the report sets out, the site has a long history as a filling station and a vehicle repair garage. But towards the end of its life as a filling station, it became more concentrated on vehicle repairs, and that is what it is entirely now. The other view to the right of that is how it looks now driving along St Mary's Road. And the two visuals below that would be how the canopy would sit and the site would be laid out if the development commences. Could I have the next slide, please? Right, that deals with issues of site security and the position of security cameras. As you can see, this filling station, in common with the other filling stations that my clients operate in Northern Ireland, would have a very comprehensive coverage of the site with CCTV cameras and off-site monitoring, so that any issues that arise on site to do with security or vandalism or antisocial behaviour can be dealt with very quickly, 24/7. Next slide, please. This one is in response to some issues that were raised about the lights from the development. And as you can see, the top right hand visual very nicely demonstrates the light pattern that the LED lighting underneath the canopy will throw. And as you can see, there's a very sharp cutoff, so the light would be contained completely within the boundary of the site. There are some other signs that are shown below that, but we haven't finalised signage scheme for this site yet, so that would be subject to a further application. Next slide, please. This shows where the proposed acoustic fencing would be at the back and the sides of the site. And below that, there are examples of acoustic fencing that have been erected on other sites. Next slide, please. Is that it? Oh, yeah. There's some more visuals for the layout of the canopy, which, as you can see, runs from the front to the back of the site in a sort of narrow format. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions for Steve Chapman now, the members of the committee?
Don't appear to be any, Chair.
I think Tony Conception, councillor Conception, would like to come in.
Thanks, Chair. It's just very, an observation to Steve, you know, in relation to, obviously, the world is changing, you know, with the climate and the non-use of fossil fuels and, you know, the ban on the petrol and diesel cars coming in 2030. I just wondered, do you think this is like sort of an investment that, you know, you're prepared to make, given that, if you like, the tide is moving away from fossil fuels? Just a comment from you.
Well, I think, notwithstanding the government's announcements, there's still going to be a very strong demand for fossil fuels for the next 10 to 15 years. And this is something that I've raised with my clients about the need to look to the future and to incorporate more electric vehicle charging points. In fact, I'm looking at a site outside Liverpool at the moment, on Prescott Road, where the rear of the site is available, possibly for residential use, but I'm suggesting that they consider doing that as a sort of electrical vehicle super hub, if you like. And they need to start giving serious thought to how the filling stations will evolve with the future energy usage in mind. And I think there is scope for retrofitting electrical vehicle charging points on this site and all the other sites that they're working on at the moment.
Okay, any other questions for Steve before I hand over to our case officer? So I'd like to hand over to Stuart Clark now, our case officer, to summarise and present any issues that are valid. And I did note that Ian Rushforth, who's our environmental health office, is present if there's any questions about the sound insulation. So we'll over to you, Stuart.
Thank you, Chair. Stuart Clark here, team leader for the South Team. You've had a detailed presentation from the agent, and you've got a detailed report in front of you. As you know, the proposal is for a new unmanned 24 hour perpetual filling station, sites located on a main arterial route and currently houses a car repairs unit with an oldie nearby and church hall adjacent. Residential properties are located to the rear. The petrol filling station would have four dispensers with a capacity for eight vehicles at any one time, under a 6.3 metre high canopy that would run centrally down the middle of the site. The site was previously occupied by a petrol filling station, and such uses are acceptable in primarily residential areas, subject to there being no impact on residential amenity or highway safety. The scheme's been carefully assessed and considered by the head of highways and transportation following the submission of a traffic assessment, which benchmarked against another similar facility elsewhere. He is satisfied that the proposed petrol filling station can safely operate without detriment to the local highway network, but Andy Dingle will be able to expand on any such matters should members have any specific queries on highways. In terms of residential amenity, the two impacts relate to noise and activity and visual impact from the canopy. The head of environmental health services has carefully assessed the submitted noise survey, and subject to the erection of a 2.4 to 3.4 high acoustic fence between the site and neighbours at the rear, he's satisfied that any noise from the petrol filling station would be acceptable. He also recommends that the acoustic fence be erected prior to any demolition works commencing to assist in minimising disturbance from the construction process. As such, an additional condition to this effect would need to be attached if members are minded to approve, and I can provide that wording to Mike Jones if that's the case. Deliveries would be restricted between 7am and 11pm, and the air and water facility would be limited between 7am and 10pm. There would be no ancillary retail or payment kiosk outlet, which would minimise dwell time at the site. Visual impact terms, the main effect would be from the canopy. However, it's considered that, given it will be set in from some six metres from the boundary, that there is existing vegetation along the boundary which will be enhanced, any impacts would be limited with heavily filtered views. The heritage specialist is satisfied that there would be no harm to the conservation area or the nearby listed church. It is considered therefore, Chair, that the proposal is an acceptable use in this location, and is therefore recommended for approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Stuart? Or for Andy, or for Ian Rushforth?
Don't appear to be any, Chair.
Okay, so I'm going to move the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Just for purposes of clarity, obviously, the recommendation will incorporate the condition amendment that the case officer's referenced as well, Chair.
Yes, thank you for that, Michael.
Any comments or amendments from colleagues? No? In which case, Chair, your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. And councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you. And just to confirm that recommendation as amended is approved unanimously. We'll then move on to our next item of business, which relates to item number nine on the agenda, which is number 257 Cherry Lane, Liverpool 4 in County Ward. Chair, we have a number of speakers present for this application and also a presentation, which I'll display once the speakers come on and are audible to members.
So I have found that we have Katie Dixon and Joe Rooney. So would Katie Dixon like to come in first to address the committee?
Yes, thanks, Chair.
You can have up to three minutes, Katie.
That's totally fine. Joe Rooney's actually with me within the office, which just makes it easier. He went and spoke today.
Three minutes if necessary, but otherwise, you can speak for him if you wish.
He's just here to answer any questions. Yeah, so the vacant framed snooker hall on Cherry Lane, we've applied for change of use from the snooker hall to a 15 room hotel. The premise of the scheme is that it will have 24 hour reception, 24 hour concierge, and basically, the cycle parking will be internal, bin store internal. We've also provided a TDA compliant room and an ambulance room, which is a bit more enhanced provision than what your standard hotel room is, but not quite suitable for a wheelchair, quite flexible use. Given that the front elevations of the scheme at the moment are quite simple, we are proposing some enhancements to the snooker hall. And one of the main things is that we are proposing the entrance to be as far away from the existing frame social club as possible. If you can just look at the red line plan, frame sits within, frame social club sits within the blue line, our site sits separately within the red line with two separate accesses, and no internal accesses or links between the two schemes at all. When the application was originally submitted, we did have quite a considerable number of objections from local residents relating around highways, objections around the frames, the operation of frames, which predominantly related to the previous owners, and that their room sizes were a concern to some residents in line with one of the adopted SPDs for bed and breakfasts. However, this is a hotel, so these measurements didn't apply. So following some extensive consultation liaison with the council case officer, we did hold a community consultation event, which about 40 local residents turned up to, where we went through the basics of a management plan with them, which operationally we were trying to provide them reassurance and a point of contact during the operation of the hotel. And this is available publicly and has been circulated to all the residents with amendments prior to appearing to committee today, and that's met with a lot of general support. Some of the main features of this is that we were going to be taking community bond from all people who are checking in of £200, and tying this in with taking their passport, photo details, and installing a facial recognition camera system over the door. So if there is any antisocial behaviour when people are returning from a night hours or parties or whatever, then if there is any interruptions on the street scene, we can take a cross-reference of these if we receive any complaints, and then people will lose the community bond. It did state within the case officer's report that people would be able to become members of the frame social club upon booking with the hotel. And this actually isn't possible, they are two unrelated uses, although they are within the same ownership. You can only become a member of the frame social club in person and within 24 hours of being checked into the hotel. So I just needed to just clarify that, just in case it was picked up on in the report. To summarise, we've worked with the council to reduce the numbers from 20 to 15, which we believe will have a reduced impact on the residential amenity, and therefore, maximum numbers of 30 people will be present within the hotel at any one time, which is significantly less than when it was a pool hall, which had unrestricted numbers of guests, and also it was a licensed premises, of which this will not be. The presence of the concierge will also enhance any measures or any potential outbreaks of noise onto the Cherry Lane elevation. Summarise, we are in accordance with the national and local policy. The case officer has agreed to us that there won't be any detrimental impact on local residents' amenity. The scheme will create jobs and will enhance the local economy, and also will bring about a viable use on the existing trader shops on Cherry Lane, of which there are many vacant units. Thank you, Chair.
You were the presenter, I'm getting mixed up with the last item, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So if there are any questions now for Katie or Joe, can we have them now? I'd like to add that the local councillor in the area has got withdrawn what they wanted to say today, because I do know that they found Katie and Jason, or Joe rather, very amenable to the objections that were being made, and they've made modifications, as you've heard about, so that the site can be better managed. So there being no questions for you, Katie, I'm going to hand over now to our case officer to present on any issues and summarise the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. Again, you've had a full presentation there and have a detailed report. Before I get into the report itself, Chair, can I report some additional matters that aren't included in the tabled update? And obviously, the tabled update refers to the withdrawal of the objections from one of the main objectives. I'm also happy to report and confirm what you've just said yourself there, Chair, that councillors Gladden and Woodhouse have also formally withdrawn their objections to the scheme. Secondly, again, I'm happy to clarify the point that the applicant has just made in their presentation, that the bar is controlled and people can only become members in person once they have checked in, and that it is unrelated to the actual booking process. So it's a minor point, but I think it's important to emphasise that, and happy for that to be included in the minutes. And then, a couple of extra conditions, Chair, if you were minded to approve the scheme today. The first is to ensure that no bottles of crepes are stored outside. The first is to ensure that no bottles of crepes are stored outside and the second one, which is quite important, there is obviously, the plan's condition refers to the management plan and you've heard mention of that. It's obviously important to have a condition that ensures the operation of the hotel is in accordance with that management plan and that for the avoidance of doubt, it shall include that further 24/7 onsite presence. So Chair, without further ado, I shall take you through the report. You've heard that this is a scheme for the conversion of the existing snooker hall into a 15-bed hotel. And again, you've heard that the scheme is separate from the associated bar and social club which sits next door. They're, they look like they're one building, but actually there's two separate entrances and there is no link between the two and there's not to be any formal physical link between the two internally either as part of this proposal. The scheme is again, as you've heard, being reduced from that that was originally submitted from 20 down to 15 and includes a reception area. So in terms of the principle of development, your officers' view is that the principle of a hotel in this location is acceptable. The previous use, as you've heard, has been at Snooker Hall, which would have been unrestricted in terms of the hours of operation and the number of guests. And so the principle of that commercial type activity is considered appropriate. It's on part of a wider parade of shops and commercial units. Immediately adjacent is a window manufacturers and then obviously further along you've got the residential street. So in terms of that residential impact, obviously the main issue for us as officers have been considering the potential for noise and activity from the comings and goings of guests to the facility. You've heard mention about the bar, obviously that is not part of this application, that is unrelated to this. The proposal itself does not include within the, within that part of the building for the hotel would include any element of bar or communal space. It is basically a series of rooms with that reception area. Charograph 2.3 takes us through the various issues set out regarding management, including the importance of both a daytime and a nighttime presence. And for all the reasons that are set out in the report Chair, we consider that to be an appropriate way of mitigating any potential noise and activity associated with the use. In terms of other changes Chair, you will have seen from the elevations that the proposal does include some minor changes to the external building. At the moment it is very utilitarian in terms of its appearance and the changes hopefully will provide a little bit more active frontage to the street and provide some animation to the, to that elevation. In terms of highway matters Chair, colleagues in highways have looked carefully at this. Again, that has been a cause of concern for residents, particularly given that it's within an area subject to football match parking restrictions. But again, they are happy that this proposal, given the nature of it, given the limited number of bed spaces, given that its proximity to the Goodison Park and Anfield Stadium is likely to attract people coming to the matches and so on. It's unlikely that significant numbers would arrive by private vehicles and are therefore happy that it can be accommodated without harm to highway matters. So for all of those reasons Chair and subject to those additional conditions, we're happy to recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Chair. A frame is well known for me all the many, many, many years and I think any improvement to that building is a vast improvement, not just the building but the area around it. It's an observation John, in terms of what this development is saying is that they're going to put a bond up to any customer coming in of £200 or whatever and antisocial behaviour, they will lose that bond and also have photo recognition of the guests that are staying there. That's been done voluntarily and you know, obviously any right-minded person would welcome that with open arms. Can we, we've got proliferation of this kind of development coming in round North River Bill. Now based on the two football clubs, I understand why that and the growth in the nightlife economy and all that kind of stuff. Can we actually try to look at that as a condition we would put on this type of accommodation as for future developers? I don't know if we can and we can't, but it's certainly something that if I'm saying to residents, for example in Kirkdale, now all of a sudden the bed and breakfast has become a hotel that we passed a number of months ago. But if I was able to, being able to say to residents, look, we're going to have that kind of facility in that facility. That would allay some of the concerns and some of the fears that residents had and still have about the people who would be using that accommodation whenever it gets finished within Kirkdale. So my question is, can we, as a councillor, can we as a planning committee, look at that particular element of this development and see if we can put it, put it our filter, our rules and regulations, say actually that's the, what we expect. If one developer can do it, why can't the rest of the developers do it? It doesn't make sense. But by the way, thanks Airways, you're consistent as always Andy, well done.
Chair, thank you and thank you councillor Hanson. And I think it's an interesting observation. I'll try and give you a simple answer, but obviously with planning it's never perhaps as straightforward as it could be.
Don't be negative John, don't be negative.
I'm trying my best not to be councillor. So obviously we don't have a policy either within the local plan or the UDP that requires this kind of arrangement whereby a bond is put up. And this is something that has been included within the management plan by the applicant. So it's been offered up voluntarily and they are happy for you as a planning committee, if you want to grant permission for a condition to be attached such that the scheme is operated in accordance with that management plan and therefore in accordance with that bond arrangement. Clearly if a future operator were to come along and say we don't want to operate in accordance with that management plan or that arrangement, we would have to look again at the way it was operated, making sure that there was sufficient control through the management to ensure that there was no harm to residential amenity. So in a roundabout way, I'm saying that it would not be essential. I think what is essential here is that there is some kind of 24/7 presence and that's something that I alluded to at the beginning in saying that it's essential that we have that reference in the, in the planning condition. The planning condition will link back in this particular case to the management plan as well, so it has got that element of the bond covered, but I don't think we could insist on it if other applicants were unwilling. What we can do however, is use this example as an exemplar of good management operations and point other applicants in the direction of what's been done here to help allay fears that are often prevalent amongst the community about the way these things are managed. So we can certainly use this as an example, but I don't think we could insist on it with other forms of application in other locations. Obviously each one's judged on its merits. There will be examples, for example in the city centre where this perhaps isn't necessary. This is very much about the context here because obviously it is close to residential properties and the applicants have gone out of their way to try and engage with the community and try and allay their fears around the operation. So, so this is an offer from the applicants in this particular case rather than something we've insisted upon. Hopefully that answered the question.
I understand that and I'm grateful that this applicant is making that kind of offer. But for me, we should always strive to be best in class. Now, and if it's not, we, for me John, now I'm telling that for a second, we know how difficult this is to protest and whatever, but we should be actively looking at something within the boundaries and regulations where we can look to implement that and start saying to developers, if you're not looking at that, we'll start looking at you differently. Because at this point in time, it's just a building gets converted, people go in there, you don't live round, round the ground, yeah? Most of our offices don't live round the ground, so you don't see and don't feel the hurts and the issues and problems that happen around those two football grounds and in the wider area. So my point is, the point I'm trying to make is, can we go away and start talking to different people, whoever we need to talk to, start to look, evaluate the legal position to see if we can actually be proactive and look to introduce that kind of rules and regulations within our planning filter. Simple request John, something that you should be able to do in the front line, no problem at all.
Thank you councillor. We can certainly request it and we can certainly encourage applicants, but as I say, I don't think we could insist upon it. And we can certainly make it.
You're not listening to me.
Yeah, okay.
For the benefit of the chair, I do feel that our officer did answer the question. He did say that we can't insist on it, but I would agree with you councillor Hanson, that if we could get this introduced in areas where there are similar problems, because there's been extreme antisocial behaviour in the past, not arising from the hotel but from the snooker hall. So I believe Merseyside Police were involved and there was damage to property. And yes, planning wants to be responsive to residents' complaints. We do have limited powers though, but where we have developers that have come in and been really proactive in this way, we'd like to praise them up and we'd like to see more of them doing this. So thank you very much to the people who have come forward with the suggestion, Katie and Joe. And I'd like to invite councillor Conception to comment now or ask a question.
Thanks Chair. Thanks Chair. Yeah, and just in relation to what councillor Hanson has raised, I mean, in that area, obviously there is problems and difficulties, but I would imagine that when applications of this nature come forward to the planning department, they're taking place preparing their discussions. And obviously the example that we're seeing today, that could be used to encourage future developers along the same lines to have a similar sort of arrangement. So there's a possibility there to do that, you know, before the application is actually submitted to have those discussions with, you know, with developers who want to introduce some sort of, same sort of proposal. So I think it's encouraging and I think it's being constructive really, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Conception. I don't seem to have any other comments. So I wish to move that the application be agreed and we do have the additional condition about the bottle storage. So is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, are there any further comments or indeed amendments from members? No, in which case Chair your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson? Thank you councillor Maret? Thank you and councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you, just to confirm the vote is therefore unanimous and the application is approved on that basis. Thank you everyone, I will now move on to our next item of business, number 10 on today's agenda, which relates to a location on Commercial Road in Kirkdale in Liverpool 5 area of the city, which again for clarity is in Kirkdale Ward. We have no speakers registered either for or against this application, so if colleagues will bear with me, I'll display images on the screen, I'll ask the case officer to comment accordingly on those.
Thank you Chair. Obviously Mike will take you through the slides in a moment. This is an application for prior approval for telecommunications equipment, including a 50-metre high mast with the associated antenna and ground level cabinets. You can see from that site plan where it is to be located, so it's on a very busy section of road, wide section of road, surrounding area primarily residential. The overall height of the mast would be 50 metres and the issues to use a planning committee are around the sighting and design of the mast. Given where it is, given the surrounding context Chair, your officers are content that the mast and equipment would not have an adverse impact on the wider street scene and for the reasons set out in the report Chair, recommend that permission be granted. Hopefully we'll just have an image in a moment, there we are of the proposed mast. So in your officers' view, this is appropriate given the context and other street furniture within that location. Happy to answer any questions Chair.
And I wanted to bring in an observation here, that we did actually have an appendix through this particular item, but in summary, the points raised on it most related to health concerns and as I've said before, it's not up to us to set health safeguards that are different from those of the ICN IRP guidelines. So it's not within our power of remit to consider the points that were pretty extensively covered in that appendix. So it's not here that it should be dealt with. So are there any other points or concerns that people wish to raise?
Don't appear to be any Chair.
So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, are there any further comments or amendments from members? No, in which case Chair your vote?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception? Thank you councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson? Thank you councillor Maret? Thank you and councillor Juarez?
Agreed.
Thank you, just to confirm the voting is unanimous on our application and it is therefore approved on that basis. We'll now move on to our final item of business, number 11 on today's agenda, which relates to a site adjacent to Tesco supermarket on Overton Street Liverpool 7, which is in Picton Ward. Over to you Chair.
And we have a few people registered to speak on this, Simon Ma and Carol Connor. And you have up to three minutes to speak. Can I invite Simon Ma to come in first please?
Well, good morning everyone. Before I, before you start the clock, can I just raise a point of order please Chair?
Yes.
So I'm not sure if this was covered in the PDF document relating to this item. There was a serious issue I raised with the head of planning and it doesn't appear to be in that, in the documents and this relates to the email address, which is planning@liverpool.co.uk, which is the publicised point of contact for all consultations and that this email address was full and was rejecting any incoming emails for a period of at least 33 hours and perhaps a lot longer. So this was in the final days before the submission deadline for this application, which we know on average is a time period when the highest volume of objections are typically received. So this happened over a period of 33 hours, which included the entirety of Tuesday the 10th. So I did raise this with the planning department and they noted that this sort of thing has happened before and they also said that they had now fixed it and basically that was it, no other action was taken. So just for, just for transparency really, that should be minuted and included for the record. Okay, so that's, that's really, that is just a point of order. In terms of objection to this particular application, I mean, there's a number of reasons in this area why this 5G mast should be rejected really. You know, the visual impact, the sighting of the mast in relation to the local supermarket, the residential area, the conservation area and the fact that millions of pounds have been invested into our local area over the last decade or so. And then you've got other adjacent, just over the road from where the mast is proposed, you've got the, what used to be Taskers and the Riverside Group's old premises, which you'd hope at some point would be renovated. And this, this, this application seriously jeopardises any such further investments and it's clear to me at least that this will be an eyesore in this area, but that is not the main reason that the committee should reject this application. The main reason is due to serious potential health implications. So I'm addressing the committee today, speaking not just as a local resident of So I'm addressing the committee today, speaking not just as a local resident of many years, but as a father of two young children and one on the way, all being well, but also as someone who's a professional electronics engineer, who lives and breathes all things electronics, and associate professor in sensors and analytical instrumentation. And whilst there are technological benefits to 5G, although the applications for them are yet to be determined, it has not been proven to be safe in the context of human health and with respect to long term exposure, categorically, it has not been proven to be safe. And there are, it's not just not my opinion, there are several independent studies in the peer reviewed academic literature that highlight the potential health effects of 5G. And so caution must be exercised, particularly in this case, as, as it relates to those who are most susceptible and therefore the most vulnerable in our society, we're thinking of children and the unborn. And this particular mast, it's citing the proximity of it to local primary schools is particularly concerning. And I would just implore all the members of the committee, there's an excellent review article which was published a few months ago on the 29th of May this year by Professor Tom Butler. And he reviews essentially, he looks, it does a review, it's quite succinct, of the health risks of essentially 5G technology and the implications for UK policymaking. And in this review, Professor Butler highlights from the overwhelming body of scientific evidence, the elevated risks of various types of cancers, neurological risk, neurodegenerative risks and so on and so forth. And also points out from the literature, demonstrations where adverse health effects have been noted, well below the safety limit set by the ICN IRP. And we also know that the ICN IRP guidelines, their focus is only on short term risk, they do not look at long term exposures. So just to give you a little bit of perspective on that, the European Academy for Environmental Medicine, they set their guidelines. And their guidelines for non thermal safety levels for radiation are in the region of a million to 100 million times less than what Public Health England has adopted based on ICN IRP guidelines. So just let that sink in for a moment. We're not talking two times less, not five times, not 10 times, or 100 or 1,000, but between a million and 100 million times less.
I think that's all we've got, I think, in your remarks of conclusion, because you have had three minutes, Simon.
Okay, I'll just wrap up, Chair. Thank you, just if you just give me another, just another minute or so.
All right.
No, thank you, I mean, because it's very important in the context of our, of the residents.
However, Simon, it's not something that we can change, as this committee have pointed out twice already during this meeting. But I'll give you another minute.
Well, I would just point this out then, at least, Chair. So you, in the objections received, you've received an objection there from one of the schools, the school which is closest, 100 and something odd metres from this 5G mast, with its six antennas and its 2.3 metre dishes. And it has a direct line of sight to the school premises. And the letter's signed by the Chair of the Government, who's an epidemiologist and the principal of the school. And can I just quote here, just, I won't read the, it's only a short letter, can I just quote here a part of what the school have said there? And they link it into the MPPF. And I'll just read it here, they say, "The sighting of this mast has direct relevance to the health and wellbeing of our students and staff. The proposal is not sustainable in relation to the objective pursued through the MPPF, section eight, paragraph 91, which states, 'Planning policies and decisions such as the ones that you're going to make in a moment should aim to achieve healthy, inclusive and safe places which enable and support healthy lifestyles, especially where this would address identified local health and wellbeing needs.'" And in the school's letter, they go on to cite, I counted about 40 odd research articles that they cite in their objection letter and they invoke, they, sorry, they implore the council to invoke the precautionary principle. If ever there was an instance when the precautionary principle should be invoked, with this mast and its sighting in relation to the school and the body of scientific evidence, this is it, this is it. And they make very reasonable requests as well, if you read that letter, for further information, they asked the applicants for some very simple and basic information regarding the maximum power density that they might experience on the school premises, very reasonable and responsible questions. And, you know, there's supposed to be a consultation with local schools. As far as I'm concerned, a meaningful consultation is a disaster.
Mr Ma, with great respect, you've had double the time allocated. You're not summing up now, you're still carrying on on the same point. And we have pointed out that it is not up to us to set health safeguards that are different from those of the ICN IRP. So will you draw your remarks to a conclusion now, please?
So, okay, well, I'll draw it, thank you, okay, I'll draw it to a conclusion, Chair. So in that instance, you know, there's other sections of the, in terms of the visual impact on the area with the millions of pounds that have been invested in that area. In terms of the MPPF, if you look at section 10 and paragraph 113, it talks about, in terms of radio communication and radio and electronic communication mast, it talks about these should be kept to a minimum consistent with the needs of consumers. And in this instance, the applicant has not submitted any proof of need. On the contrary, I emailed Paula Barker, the MP for our area, for Liverpool Way of Tree, back in August. And I asked her specifically, had any constituents phoned her, emailed her, spoken to her, contacted in any way and requested 5G? Or even had any constituents lamented that they just didn't have fast enough download speeds at present on the phone, or they just couldn't watch that Netflix movie in 8K on the bus? And she replied to me in August, and in her reply, not one single person has requested or made any implication that they require or that they need this capacity. And so ultimately, this should be rejected, however you want to frame it, whether it's based on the visual impact in relation to the conservation area, whether it's because radio frequency radiation can be considered a form of effluvia as a pollutant. And therefore, you can look at the health implications and exciting because it is a form of pollution. Or, you know, whichever way it is, ultimately, this should be, and I sincerely ask the committee to, to consider these points that have been raised and to reject this, this application. Thank you for the time, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Now, can I invite Carol Connor to come in, if she's here with us?
Doesn't appear that she's present to join us, Chair, so I suggest we move directly to our case officer, who I was asked to also confirm the relevant national planning policy frameworks, as far as they apply to determining such applications, just for the purpose of clarity for the committee.
Tell me, Paul, for the case officer now, please.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully, we'll have some slides, if not, not to worry, I'll take you through the report. Again, Chair, this is an application for telecommunications mast and associated equipment. You've got a full report in front of you. You can see from that site plan that this is located to the rear of the Jack's Tesco store. And then on the opposite side, you've got a furniture showroom type building. So there doesn't, there's not a great deal of sort of active frontage on that particular street. The back of the Tesco, you can see on the plan there is all car parking. See the wider context, there are some residential properties there and I'll come to that in a moment.
That, that is the front of Tesco, not the back, just to point that out.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we've, we've got the application now, you can see where it is in relation to the store. And you've got obviously detailed explanation of what the proposal is. I just want to pick up on, on the comments that are made rather than take you through the report. The first issue that was raised by the speaker was that the inbox was blocked. Your officers have been made aware of that situation and have responded to a number of issues made in relation to this application. I want to stress that this application was withdrawn from a previous agenda because of concerns raised at that point, that the, a number of properties haven't been consulted and a number of other properties that had been consulted didn't actually exist anymore. So we were using a slightly outdated database for that. So we took it off the agenda and we have done a further consultation. Your officers are satisfied that has been sufficient opportunity to make representations on this application, notwithstanding the period that the inbox was allegedly blocked. The second point about investment in the area, that's acknowledged, but I see no reason to suggest that the erection of a telecommunications mast would of itself harm investment in the wider area. In terms of the health implications, we have listed the entirety of the objections made, which is perhaps unusual for committee report. Perhaps suggests a strength of feeling here in relation to this particular application. And we've included, for the avoidance of any doubt, the entirety of the objections that have been made. However, as you've heard on a number of other applications, both this committee meeting and many other previous committee meetings, the National Planning Policy Framework, and I will read it to you, paragraph 11. Where are we, 113, I think? Sorry, 116. I shall read it, "Local planning authorities must determine applications on planning grounds only. They should not seek to prevent competition between different operators, question the need for an electronic communication system," and that picks up on the other point about need, "or set health safeguards different from the International Commission guidelines for public exposure." So whilst those arguments are well understood and acknowledged by your officers, there is nothing in your officer's view about this particular application that means that you should consider it any differently to any other telecommunications mast that comes before you. So for all of those reasons, Chair, as I set out in the report and as I've responded to, we are recommending approval. Happy to answer questions.
Any comments from members of the committee?
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Are there any further comments from members of the committee in terms of amendments or comments? No? In which case, we'll move straight to the vote. Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception? Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson? Thank you. Councillor Marat? Thank you, and councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you. Just to confirm, the voting, the votes are clarity unanimous and that application is therefore approved on that basis. That concludes our items of business on today's meeting. And obviously, thank you from my perspective as to colleagues and members participating. And again, the Chair, if you'd like to make your closing comments, thank you.
Thank you, everyone who's attended today's meeting. We have had lots of comments today, obviously, about health issues pertaining to 5G rollout. As it's become very clear for anybody looking in and already known to members of the planning committee, we have very limited powers on this. The powers rest with central government and with our International Commission on Non- Ionising Radiation Protection. Thank you, everyone who's come along today and we'll see.